Can you hear us now, Jen? Yes? Okay.
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yep. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So the Newton Planning Board would like to hold a public meeting on Tuesday, February 27, 2024, beginning at 7:01 PM in the Newton Town Hall. First order of business is to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Ms. Burke is not available tonight and is unable to be with us. So I would like to appoint Mr. Gibbons for now until he has to step down because of a conflict of interest on some of the following hearings. But the first order of business, and I would like to thank both applicants for continuing to today because of the previously expected storm that never happened when the town hall was closed. So the first order or the first hearing tonight is a continuation of CCL Holdings of Drake, Massachusetts' request for a public hearing for a six-lot subdivision at 24 New Boston Road in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 3, Block 1, Lot 12. The applicant was previously in front of us. Some additional information was added to the drawing set. Jen, do you have anything to add since our previous meeting? And I forgot to mention Barbara White is also remote tonight.
So my only comment is to make sure we address the waivers. Beyond that, I don't have any additional comments right now.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quintel? Can you pull the mic? Sorry.
Do you have copies of the plan? If not, I got a few here.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Dennis Quintel representing Craig Lucier, who's here tonight, CCL Holdings. The property is listed as Tax Map 3, 112. It has 18 acres. The proposed roadway, which we've talked about in the past, is going to be about 840 feet long with a cul-de-sac, proposed to be named Bell's Way, total of seven buildable lots. So we've revised plans and sent them to the planning board. There's a couple of additions that I'll mention as I go through here. You also have my memo that I sent in at the end of January and also the HOA documents that were sent in for review. So the first item is on the title sheet, which is the first sheet here. We did get state subdivision approval, so I added the subdivision approval on the center of the plan near the bottom. So we have that subdivision approval number. It has a revision date on it. And also there's note number six that we're adding a waiver to that we'll have to be, we'll talk about in a few minutes. Second item I want to talk about is on the first sheet after the title sheet. This is the definitive plan for recording. So I've met with the assessor of the town and now have the new tax map numbers for each of the lots. So each lot has a tax map number on it instead of just 1 through 7. I've added notes to the plan that are required and a couple of survey details that we had to make sure that those were completed on the plan. Those are on the far left-hand corner there. Sheet 2. Let's do this stuff as quick as I can. Sheet 2 is the existing conditions plan. And we've added a note that the existing well that's on the site will be decommissioned according to the state regulations. That's the existing well that's on the property here. That's going to have to be done away with because that's right where the road is going to go. And also I have I have made an attempt to, as best I could, to locate all the houses, wells, and septics within 200 feet. I went to the sites, looked over, and located all the ones that I could see that are visible and put those on the plan. Then I went to the town office downstairs, met with Robin. We went through all the each lot, the files that are in each lot, to try to locate any plans that shows where those physical features are that I wasn't able to obtain. And with that, there was a few that, there was no documentation that the town had. So I then went to the homes and knocked on the door and got some information for that and was able to put that information on the plans. There is one, maybe two items that are shown on the plan that may not be accurate. So I prepared a waiver request, and this is from Section 8 of the planning requirements. And I'll read it accordingly. Dear members of the board, for your, for the proposed Bell's Way subdivision off of New Boston Road, please accept this letter as a formal request to waive the specific requirements of subdivision regulation, Section 815F. That says, quote, "The shape, size, height, location, and use of all existing features, including wells and septics on the site within 200 feet of the site." And so those are to be shown on the plan. So I go on to say that we have made a reasonable attempt to locate required off-site features, searching the town records, visual observation, and requests to lands, to the landowners. The features shown on the existing conditions plan, Sheet 2, dated 1/12/24, are residential homes with wells and septic systems based on the information that we obtained. And so that's the request for waiver. And I did send one in, but if you don't have one, you can use that one. Got one?
Thank you. Is that the ink-signed copy?
Yes. Well, it does have my signature on it, but I can
Okay. I'd like one of those for the file.
So going on to item number four, Sheet 4, which is the grading plan. So 2 and 3, Sheet 2 and Sheet 3 also show those features. And also test pit information and whatnot. So that's on Sheet 4. Added the note on this sheet also, on Sheet 4, about the well that needs to be decommissioned. I added a note about flared ed sections on the culvert pipes and noted that the culvert pipes are to be PVC or concrete, which the town engineer didn't care one way or the other. I added the outlet structure. The basin is now an infiltration basin to recharge the groundwater. And I added a revision date to the plan also above the title block. Sheet number 5. Sheet number 5 is
Recording in progress.
Am I okay?
Good. We had some technical difficulties. You probably weren't even aware of it.
So Sheet 5 is the grading at the beginning of the road. There's a contour line that I had to put on that that, from a town engineer, addressed one of his comments. That's the profile, plan and profile sheet. Sheet number 6 is the highway access plan. And we revised that to show the full 400-foot required distance in each direction. And as you can see, there's plenty of distance in each way to see cars coming for 400 feet in each direction. I also put a revision date on that sheet. So the other sheets are detailed sheets. No changes to D1 and D2. Sheet D3. This is the sheet that shows the details about the drainage structures and the catch basin. I had to label that as being three feet below the pipe, so it's three feet deep. The basin is now an infiltration detention basin for surface runoff treatment, pollutant removal, and groundwater recharge. The outlet control structure has been revised and added, also added a revision date to that. So this is all the detail for the outlet structure and the cross-section for the infiltration and detention basin. So all of these are actually responses that address the comments from the town engineer. And we did get a letter February 13 from the town engineer. And he said that he's reviewed the plans. And his last statement on his letter, I won't read the whole thing, but it says, "Based on our review, we find that all of our previous comments have been addressed, and the project is now acceptable from an engineering perspective." I assume you've got copies of that. If you don't, I have a copy here. So we also received a bond cost estimate from the town engineer for the cost for doing construction of this road with the drainage analysis and drainage requirements. So we don't have any objection to the amount that he's come up with on that. The owner plans on building the roadway and he plans on living there himself, but there might be, the road will pretty much be completed up until the base coat of pavement until they, until he gets a building permit. So what we're proposing is to have the restoration bond that will cover items for taking care of topsoil and cutting and filling and erosion control, hydroseating, and all that stuff. So the restoration bond would be a total of $30,267, $30,267, using the line items that Mike Vignali came up with for that. And so that's what we're proposing is to put that in place. And once the road becomes up to base code of pavement, then we'll take a look at that at that point in time and more or less add more to the bond amount at that point in time prior to getting a building permit. This is a short road. The reason for doing this is that, you know, once the construction starts, it won't take long to do the stripping of the topsoil, cut and fill the subgrade, and putting the drainage pipes and culverts in. So within a couple of weeks' time, most of the road's going to be done. So that's why we propose to do it this way and hopefully that's acceptable to the board. So that kind of summarizes quickly kind of what the changes that we've made to the plans. And we do have the state, like I said, the state subdivision approval, and we've got Mike Vignali's comments addressed. And I guess I can answer any questions that you have and maybe then address the waiver.
Thank you. Jen, are you Jen? Do you have any deep thoughts or comments?
Not at this point unless a couple of things that might come up.
Okay. Anybody from the board? Negative. Okay. Or the applicant in the back? You all set? Okay. Do we want to open this up to the public or do we want to take the
Before you open it up to the public, can I suggest you take care of the waiver?
Waiver? That was my question.
Yep.
So as Mr. Quintel, on behalf of CCL
CCL, yeah.
Thank you. Holdings presented a waiver to the board. Do we have any discussion on that waiver?
I'll make a motion that we approve it because he, Mr. Quintel, has gone above and beyond and done his due diligence to gather as much information as he could where it was available.
Is there a second for the approval of the waiver? A motion to approve the waiver?
This is Barbara. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Barbara.
Cut you out.
Ready? Yep. Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Now that that's taken care of, anything else before we open this up to public comment? What questions, concerns? Okay. Before I open it up in the room, is there just five people? One, two, three, four? Three of them are asked. Is there anybody else on Zoom? Jen? Or is it just
There are three.
Okay.
Ms. White.
It looks like Coleman McDonough's on there.
Brown. And I assume it's Mr. McDonough.
Okay. Okay. Doesn't look like there's anybody online. So if anybody from the public would like to come up and speak, please state your name and your location address. Yes, sir. Sorry, you had to talk into the microphone, please.
I got to talking to the microphone.
Yeah. Thank you.
I just don't want it poking me in the eye. Oh, somebody might want to do that.
Could I have a copy of the revised plan? I'm probably going to have a lot to say between now and whenever this gets done. First, I'd like to ask a kind of a general question. CCL Holdings LLC is the applicant, and they are a corporation in Massachusetts. But my, doing a business search, found that they are not registered in the state of New Hampshire as required by RSA 304C.
Is that a question or a statement?
Well, it's kind of a statement. As of noon today, they still were not registered in the state of New Hampshire and have no registered agent in the state of New Hampshire. And the law states, and it's, I guess, basically just a legal requirement because I don't see any real penalties attached to it. Prior to conducting business in the state of New Hampshire, a foreign corporation must register with the Secretary of State's office.
So it's zero purview of the planning board?
Should the town be doing business with an unregistered corporation?
We're not.
Well, according to CCL Holdings' business description, they are in the business of buying, selling, acquiring, holding, developing real estate, et cetera, et cetera. So this is actually a business activity for CCL Holdings?
So the town of Newton is not doing any business with, as far as I'm aware, CCL Holdings?
Well, I would think that obtaining a subdivision approval is a business activity, regardless of who's doing it, and the town of Newton is a party to that business.
I would professionally and personally disagree with that statement. But if you have concerns, I'm sure you can speak to our legal counsel.
Okay. My first concern right now, although I do want to speak to a lot of things, is the access point of the subdivision. I did send an email earlier because it's rather detailed. And the second concern is the fact that this property, right now, today, without a subdivision approval, is a non-conforming lot, which I mentioned the last meeting on this subject. From my email, Newton subdivision regulation, Section PII, general principles. An applicant shall observe each and every of the following general principles of residential development. Subparagraph A, the subdivision plan shall be in harmony and consistent with the town's master plan, zoning ordinances, and subdivision regulations. Subdivision plan shall conform to all regulations of the board and other applicable bylaws, ordinances, regulations, statutes of local, state, and federal governments. Newton zoning ordinance validity, this ordinance shall supersede any existing town ordinances with which it may be in conflict. The approval of the proposed, the subdivision proposed by CCL Holdings will result in at least three violations for the town of Newton zoning ordinances. Section XXI, non-conforming lots, expansion of non-conforming use. Except as noted below, an expansion of a non-conforming use is prohibited except by variance by the zoning board of appeal. As defined in the zoning ordinances, a non-conforming use is as follows. Any lawful use of building structures, premises, land, or paths thereof existing as of the effective date of this ordinance or amendment thereto, non-conformant with the provisions of this ordinance shall be considered to be a non-conforming use. The lot of land at 24 New Boston Road is shown on the plan as having 100.5 feet of frontage on the road. The current requirements in residential zone A is 150 feet minimum. The property is existing non-conforming property, and any use other than the current use is prohibited without variance. Section XXXIV, access management. These regulations shall apply to all access connections constructed on or after the effective date of these regulations. Designed or intended for motor vehicle, bicycle, equestrian, or pedestrian use to arterial and town roads. They shall apply to all existing access connections for the purposes described in this article whenever the land used or the access classification of such existing access connection changes or whenever the existing access is upgraded by reconstruction, relocation, modification, or expansion. These regulations do not apply to the original approved, approval of extent-platted subdivisions governed by the town of Newton subdivisions regulations. So this is a new subdivision. Access classification system that defines driveways according to their purpose and use. Access connection, these are definitions, any connection to a road or street which permits access to or from the road or street by vehicles, equipment, cars, trucks, buses, et cetera. An access connection may be a road, street, driveway, or trail. Driveway, an access connection other than from another public road or street, in road classification, a system for roadway hierarchy used to determine the appropriate degree of access management regulation in order to promote public safety and congestion prevention. Section X, standards, the arrangement, character, extent, width, grade, and location of all access connections shall conform with these regulations and shall be considered in relation to existing and planned roads, streets, and driveways, topographical conditions. The residential driveways along New Boston Road are classified as very low-volume driveways. Because it connects at either end to a state highway, Route 125 at the northern end and Route 108 at the southern end, New Boston Road is classified as a minor arterial road. Number spacing and width of access points. Paragraph B3B, very low-volume driveway shall be located no closer than 360 feet from an existing or proposed driveway or from an existing or proposed street. My driveway is located within five feet of my southern boundary, which is 24 New Boston Road. The proposed road will intersect New Boston Road approximately 45 feet from the edge of my driveway, resulting in a violation of zoning ordinance. Additionally, the residential driveways at numbers 22, 21, 20, 19, 18, et cetera will also be within the 360-feet minimum spacing requirement for the proposed road in addition, resulting in additional violations. Paragraph 6, corner clearance. No driveway approach may be located closer to the corner than indicated in Table 3A. The measurement shall be taken from the intersection of the property lines at a corner to the nearest edge of the proposed driveway pavement. Posted speed limit on New Boston Road is 30 miles an hour. This requires a distance from the corner of my driveway to the proposed road of 325 feet, resulting in a violation of the zoning ordinance. Additionally, residential driveways at numbers 22, 21, 20, 19, 18, et cetera will also be within a 25, 325-foot minimum requirement. Approval of this proposed subdivision by the town of Newton Planning Board would be irresponsible.
Do you have a question or additional comments?
Well, I have additional comments. You know, I don't think that this particular subdivision is appropriate. I don't see any compelling need for another subdivision in the town, and it would cause more disruption to the neighborhood and no value to the neighborhood at all.
So those three points that you just mentioned, the board cannot consider?
Why not?
Because it's illegal.
It's what?
It's illegal.
It's not illegal.
Jen, can you opine on that of property value?
This is not a property value question. This is a safety question. It's a zoning, it's a zoning ordinance question. There are at least three violations that would be
I'm not talking about what you previously said. You just mentioned three additional points, and the planning board cannot consider the three points you closed your argument with. And in regards to the safety issue, if you actually read the corner clearance issue where your last bullet on the sheet, there's been language removed or not included in this letter that says, "When these requirements cannot be met due to lack of frontage, the nearest edge of the proposed driveway pavement shall be located as far as possible from the intersection of the property line at that corner."
Well, since it's a violation of the zoning ordinance
It's not.
It is. This is quoted from the zoning ordinance, and we require a variance.
Jen, do you have a
Dennis, do you not need a
Yep. Yes, please.
So the lot that is proposed to be subdivided is a legal lot of record. If they just wanted to build without further subdivision, only one single-family home would be allowed because of their frontage. However, they're proposing to actually build a road constructed to town standards. That gives them the appropriate frontage for the number of lots they are proposing. It is not a non-conforming lot in that regard, so there is no zoning violation. No variance is needed for what is No variance is needed for what is proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, can we go back to this? It says, the lot of land at 24 New Boston Road is shown as having 105 feet of frontage on the road. The current requirement is 150 feet minimum. It is a non-conforming lot and the subdivision is a change of use or an expansion of use, however you want to look at it.
Jen, do you have a comment for that?
Except as noted below, an expansion of a non-conforming use is prohibited except by variance of the zoning board of appeals. As paragraph two, section XI, non-conforming lots, of the Newton zoning ordinance.
So Dennis, the, the proposal is for residential lots that are conforming to the zoning requirements. Of course, the road does have to be built, the subdivision has to be approved for that to be true, but there is no non-conforming use being proposed.
Thank you for that.
There will likely be a change maybe in the tax status if it's under current use, but that is the only non-prohibited.
Thank you.
Could you say that again? I had difficulty hearing you.
Her. There is not, from a land use perspective, there is not a change of use by adding a road to the lot to then potentially be subdivided at a future use or a future.
But it is an expansion of use.
It is not.
It's not an expansion of use?
No, it's, it's remaining the same. It is a residentially zoned lot, the subdivision would still result in residentially zoned lots. It would just.
Residentially zoned as a lot for a single family, for one single-family dwelling. An expansion of use, you are adding, you are adding six. You are breaking up into six lots and adding five, yeah, six additional single-family dwellings to the same parcel of land. And currently.
No, it would become the, the five parcels because it is being subdivided, at least as proposed.
Well, I don't believe that this is not an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Unfortunately.
With, with a variance, you could do the expansion and it may end up not being a non-conforming use. But until you have the variance, this is still a non-conforming lot and whatever you do is either an expansion or a change of use. And since the.
So Dennis.
And since the structures were demolished and the, and the non-conforming use of a, of a residence, although it was seasonal, has been abandoned for more than two years. The only use that this land has had in the last, I'm going to say five years, by my best recollection, is sitting empty and growing trees which were harvested two years ago.
Yes, Jen.
Um, so while I do not think that there is any zoning violation occurring with this, this proposal in this subdivision, I will inform, I apologize, I forget your last name, sir. But you do, if the planning board makes a decision this evening, you or anyone else does have 30 days to appeal that decision if you feel that there has been a zoning violation that would be appealed to the zoning board of adjustments.
Well, I believe that all these three points on access management and expansion of non-conforming use under this current plan is going to result in a violation to the zoning ordinances.
I think Dennis wants to say something. I have a question. Expansion of use, does that mean it's, it would be used for something other than residential?
Did you hear that, Jen?
I did. To have a change of use or an expansion of use means that you are doing a use that is not allowed under the zoning. This is just creating new lots with a use that is already permitted in the zone.
So use is still residential, so it's not.
Yep.
It's just volume of use, it's the same use. Okay, I just wanted some.
It's, it's volume of use simply because of new lots being created.
Exactly, okay.
Mr. Quintel.
So, just a couple of quick comments. As far as the location of driveways along the town road and whatnot, I think the, the, number one, the subdivision regulations do allow subdivisions of property in a residential zone. And it's been hap, it's done in town many times. That I've been involved with a number of subdivisions in town similar to this where there's existing lots of record along the, along the street that are nearby. If we were going to develop a, a new plan, a whole new subdivision, then, and create new driveways and create new abutting lots along the town road, then I think that the zoning ordinance for setbacks would come into play. But these are all existing lots of records, so we can't change those. So I don't think that the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations apply in this case. So I think that the subdivision regulations do allow subdivisions of property, whether they have, uh, they, they don't necessarily have to have, meet the, the lot size requirement for a subdivision, frontage-wise, to be able to access. All you have to do is have a minimum of 60 feet of right-of-way to access a piece of property to put a road in for a subdivision. So I think we comply with the regulations, I think we comply with the zoning ordinance, and I think that that's my comments at this point in time. I think I don't, I don't have to say anymore.
Another member or anybody else in the public that would like to speak? I see you moving, Mrs. Estabrock.
Hi, Jenny. Sandra Estabrock, I live on New Boston Road. I can kind of see the gentleman's point about it is a lot for a long time. So it possibly could be a pre-existing non-conforming lot because we're supposed to have 150 feet frontage. This lot only has 105. So as he said, possibly it is a pre-existing non-conforming lot in that you might have to give him a waiver and then commence with the subdivision.
Jen, I have a question for you. Other than delaying the applicant's approval process, however, whatever you want to call it, if the applicant seek clarification from the ZBA, is that something the planning board could do? And Mr. Quintel's.
Um, I mean, you, you could certainly condition an approval based on the need of a variance, but I, without any hesitation, do not believe this application needs a variance for any dimension or conformity of use or anything that has been brought up.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you have anything else to say.
I don't have anything else. I know we talked about the bond, so that's the only other thing I'd like to talk about or make sure that the planning board is okay with what we propose for the bond requirements. Because that would be a condition of approval anyways.
Okay. I, based on Mike Vicnelli's review, have no additional comments personally. I'm not sure if there's anybody else on the board. Or Jen. Or Barbara, sorry.
Yeah, this is Barbara. I just wanted to ask Mr. Quintel, could you tell me what the amount of the initial bond that you wanted to put down? Because I know it's different than the entire bond of 330,144.
That was.
It's 10% of that, Barbara, sorry.
That was the total amount, yes. So we're talking about restoration bond, which includes light items, that line items that I talked about, item one, 17, 18, and 19, plus engineering contingency fees.
So it's 30,000 and change? Or is it 30 even?
267.
Okay, and that's just, that's just, that's just for that restoration part. Okay, that's what I needed to know, thank you very much.
That's if they got 400 feet out of the 820, 824, is that what it was? In and something happened, it would give the town enough money to hire a contractor to go out there and stabilize the site, making sure that there was no erosion, et cetera.
Until, until further work would be proposed and the town is protected, is what, what our goal is, is to protect the town. And that's what a bond's for, is to protect the town.
And we're talking about a cash bond, right, not a letter of?
However you do that, I don't know how.
Because I believe the board has talked about that we weren't going to accept any more letters of, that we wanted cash bonds.
Jen, do you have coffee? One thing, you can't restrict it to cash only. You have to allow at least two means, the town. Planning board has always accepted letters of credit as well as cash. But the state last year passed a law that said that you cannot be a cash-only business.
So no.
It was a good try, I actually like it.
I was unaware of the new law that was put in place.
So a letter of credit would work?
Just one comment to assuise Mr. Marchand's worries. I'm going to be getting together with the treasurer because presently, all the bonds go straight to the treasurer. I have no record. Henceforth, I will be keeping a record if I have to stand in the treasurer's office and wait for her to, to give me the information so that.
Let me.
Know when things expire.
Step back, bonds go through the.
Yep.
Building department, not planning board. So it's conditional approval, $30,000. When they pull their building permits, that's when the bond happens. So we, as the planning board, have absolutely no idea where the money goes. Or if they, the correct steps were followed.
So hopefully we'll be putting a new process in place so that those are tracked much better.
All right, as long as we can track it.
One question I have, I can't put 30,000 and change in the.
30,267.
Wait a second.
It's the number.
Is the number.
Was there any change?
There was no change.
Okay.
Is there anybody else from the public like to comment or question, concerns? Anybody else online? Just make sure I didn't miss anybody, Barbara?
Nobody's hands go up.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Jen, do you have any other deep thoughts, comments?
Nope.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the application with the following conditions. One, actually I'll state that approving the application does fall within the scope of the applicable zoning and site plan regulations for a subdivision and that justice would be served by approving the application. Conditions present, that the roadway shall be constructed in accordance with subdivision regulations 82, 8, um, point 2, point 4, driveway access road design, traffic technical design standards, submit a recordable MY Law, submit a road performance guarantee which we discussed, which will be the restoration bond of 30,267 dollars, and set the bound points.
Can we also add that the applicant must receive, if the, like I boilerplate, boilerplate language of all applicable state and federal permits?
Yes.
Yes.
I apologize.
Can I, this is Barbara, can I ask you a question? Did we do the waiver yet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have an, just one quick question.
Then I'll second this motion.
Excuse me?
Do you need an AOT for this?
No.
No, not yet, no.
I just, I will have to edit the plan for the waiver and just say that it was approved tonight. We'll have to add that to the plan.
Did you hear Barbara, she seconded? I'm also, thank you.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Gibbons, you need to.
Recuse myself?
Lose yourself, please. And I would like to appoint Mr. Paul, I'm going to.
Come on.
He's not going to help you.
Papa Christus.
Papa Christus.
Papa Christus?
You got it.
Thank you. Going forward, because of the conflict of interest for Mr. Gibbons. So next on the agenda tonight is a continuation of 125 Development New Hampshire Corp.'s request for a public hearing for a 44-unit residential development in private roadway for the land off Puzzle Lane in New Hampshire. The property, properties are referenced as tax map 14 block 1, lots 1-1, 2, 27-3, 27-6, and 27-7. Barry's getting himself situated. Can you just for everybody's benefit, give us a one-minute refresher? It's been a month or two.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Guyer. I'm with Jones Beach Engineers for the applicant. The intent of this project is to construct the 44-bedroom multifamily project on lots 1-1 and 2. It includes eight five-plexes and one four-plex building, total of nine buildings, and includes a 535-foot cul-de-sac. It also includes the construction of the remaining roadway necessary to connect the proposed roadway from Phase 2 to Puzzle Lane, which is on Phase 1. We have obtained all the required approvals from ZBA, the town engineer, and the town planner. The last item was the review of the landscape plan required to screen the proposed road from the Plastow Butters. So the requirement was, from the ZBA, was that we meet and work with the Concom regarding the landscape plan. We have met with them twice. The landscape plan that is on the floor there is the one that, the last one that included all of their changes. And with that, I believe we're complete.
Everything went well at the Conservation Commission?
We met with them once, they asked for additional underscorey, understory plantings, which we provided, and that's the plan that is on the floor. You guys should have that in your package as well.
And Jim, remind me, we took, or Jen, you can step in, jurisdiction of this a while ago. We're bumping, you emailed us reminding the planning board that we're, are we past 65 days? At 60, we're almost.
We're up against it.
Yeah.
I think the email that you received is not regarding that, it's regarding Phase 2.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
I actually went through the, through the minutes yesterday and could not find where the board had taken jurisdiction.
I can look through mine, I know I have them.
Yeah, you've definitely taken jurisdiction, it's been quite some time, though.
I think we've asked for an extension on.
Well, we granted a continuance from the last meeting.
Right.
Which was a continuance from the previous meeting. So there's no issue with the, the board acting tonight or within the.
Thank you. So the board has jurisdiction of this, at least I think we do. Does, does the board have any questions? the board have any questions of where we are?
Dennis, I have one. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
Just one small item. It's not, just to point out for the board, the landscaping plan that they submitted on at the end of January to fulfill some concerns about the butters' view in Plastow. My only concern is that some of the landscaping, I just want the board to be aware, doesn't occur in the town of Plastow, which you don't have any jurisdiction. It's not an issue that they're proposing landscaping for Newton to approve, and they have to go get Plastow's approval. I just want you to be aware, for any bonding or anything that might come in, you do not have the authority to bond landscaping in the town of Plastow.
Okay, so just for our purposes for discussion, if there's a hundred trees total and ten of them in Plastow, the bonding should only include ninety trees in Newton?
I would, effectively, yeah, I would just not honestly bother with the bonding of any trees in Plastow. They're shown on the plan. Plastow would have to approve the same plan, so they are covered in that way. It's just the financial aspect of it.
Right. I believe the last time we had the meeting, the woman abutter that was here, I can't recall her name, and we had the discussion, was the way the tree line was, it was shifted further to one direction where we talked about it needed to be shifted, what was it, back down?
So, if you, if you look at the plan, what we did is we followed along the edge of the road for the majority of it. But because this area is wetland, we can't
Right.
and disturb the wetlands. So, we shifted it down along the property line, and I believe the abutter you're speaking of lives in this.
Right.
So, we've, we've done the best we could by, without going into the wetlands.
And that was the issue that we were dealing with, who was primarily just that one abutter that was right there, the, like I said, the woman that was here.
I think she's in the audience today.
Oh. Yeah, because we, we had stated we wanted to make sure that that was taken care of.
Any other comments?
Now I know why you look familiar.
Barbara, do you have anything?
I, I actually do not unless we're going to talk about some sort of bond, that's all.
I don't think, yeah, I was going to, just because we're talking about plantings and everything, and we may have somebody that may like to speak, I'm not sure. So, I'd like to open up for public comments.
So I've been coming to these meetings.
Just can you?
I'm sorry, Lynn Jeffries, twelve Ridgewood Road.
Thank you.
So I've been coming to these meetings now for over three years. I have seen the board change multiple times. I was at the last Conservation Committee meeting, and their dilemma is that they need to know from the zoning what the zoning board needs from them. So that is not finished going back and forth between zoning and conservation the last time I was at the Conservation. And I, I have been in touch with Plastow about the fact that, you know, these trees are in Plastow, and it's, whoops, things are falling out of the board. All right. And I guess that you will need a signature from Plastow because it's, I'm not sure how, but at some point, Plastow will get, can get involved and will notify the butters, and then we can get something from Plastow.
Can, I'm going to pause you for a second. Jim, do you want to kind of lay that out?
Sure. Simply put, for them to be able to do the construction, even though there's no outright construction being proposed in the town of Plastow, there is activity that involves a lot that extends into Plastow. They will have to get the town of Plastow's approval to do the work that they are proposing. Even though it's really the minimal landscaping behind your property, they will still have to get Plastow's approval. I've actually spoken to the Plastow Planning Department. They're aware that this will be coming down the pike in the future, but on the signature and approval, that Newton would have to do Plastow and have to sign off on the same thing. There's already a note on the plan set that basically speaks to that point as well. So, nothing can happen until Plastow also says yes.
So hopefully, through that process, I can get some assurance from the Plastow side that that planting will happen. I am concerned, and I keep going back to it, when, before all this started, when he first started coming, the first thing he did was clearcut all the way back into Plastow. So, no matter what buffer he does, he is not growing back thirty-year-old trees and, and brush that stopped my backyard from being able to see his trucks going by. And so that continues to be a concern of mine. And I guess that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Alberti, two Ridgewood Road, also in Plastow. Just kind of expounding off of her comments. There, you know, in the landscaping design and plan section of your zoning, it specifies that landscaping buffer where residential butts commercial shall be a fifty-foot. Landscape buffer strips of fifty feet must be provided where proposed non-residential development abuts residential properties. So, to her point, you know, the land without having anything approved or come in front of the planning board was essentially clearcut. So that fifty-foot existing buffer was clearcut. So, there's two questions I have. As number one, because that's in your zoning, and we know that the ZBA granted a variance from the two-hundred-foot setback, I assume that the right-of-way of this roadway is going to also infringe upon the fifty-foot landscaping buffer. So, I don't know if that's going to require variance itself, maybe a waiver. So, I just want to put that forth. But number two, there is a proposal for some landscaping. We appreciate the effort and the consideration by the ZBA to add that as a condition, but I know the jurisdiction now falls within the, the planning board to sort of enforce, appropriate a proper bond and so on. So, we're here to make sure that that kind of, you know, is all considered properly. But again, there's, there's a single strip being proposed right now, but we've lost fifty feet of natural vegetation that was clearcut, probably within, as a code enforcement violation. But I know code enforcement's a challenge in all these towns. I'm sure that that was not recognized. I'm not even sure if there was a permit even given for the cutting. I don't, I know there wasn't one given for the, his land in Plastow where he cut as well. So, I just want to have the board consider that while we do have this landscaping plan, we have lost the additional vegetation that was natural there, and to consider that, that there may be some additional enhancements to this that involves natural plantings and whatnot to sort of bring that vegetation back. And again, that's in Newton. Thank you.
If I may, I just want to speak to the, the ZBA decision and the landscape plan. The ZBA put the condition on that the applicant worked with the Conservation Commission to develop the landscape plan. The landscape plan is under the purview of the planning board as part of the site plan. So, the, they included in their decision that the landscape plan had to be reviewed, and we were working with the Conservation Commission, but ultimately had to be approved by the planning board.
And I believe one of the questions that he asked was about that fifty-foot buffer, and that was one of the reasons why it was originally cut, was because you were going to go through those other properties in Plastow, but in order not to get that variance that you would have required, that's why you brought the road back into, into Newton?
Yeah, we shifted the road. It's all in Newton, and it's.
Right, so that you wouldn't have to get that variance that he was talking about.
So we wouldn't get correct. We would have had to get a variance to have the road in Plastow, so.
Exactly.
We're not doing that.
That's what eliminated the fifty-foot?
No, well, to all due respect, those are two different things. A road can't go in Plastow without being connected to the Plastow roads. That is one thing.
Right.
So that was never going to happen. Really what I was pointing out was in your landscaping zoning, that does require a fifty-foot buffer going for residential commercial, which this is, right? That roadway is about fifty-two feet away from that delineation. So, I assume that with the right-of-way off the roadways, we need another one, twelve, fifteen feet.
And we included the landscape, as you see.
So my concern is that, because of the four years ago, whenever it was, that was all eliminated, again, probably with code enforcement violation, that should never have been cut that early in the process. Now that the vegetation's gone, this looks before, not only, and the CONCOM work is just advisory, you know, and so, again, jurisdiction's on you guys. I'm just asking for consideration of not only what they have proposed, which we appreciate, but the additional.
Excuse me, Dennis. Mr. Alberti really should be up at the microphone, because I can't hear a thing he's saying. Yeah.
Thank you, Barbara.
No, I'm, I apologize. It was just kind of going back that the, that we're already in the fifty-foot buffer. It's already been cut, and just looking to see if there's additional consideration for the area that is, you know, pretty much been taken out. Again, probably a code enforcement violation, but we're here, right, because that was four years ago. So, either we go back in history and try to enforce something, or we say, hey, what happened to the trees? You shouldn't have cut them in the first place. So I guess I'm just looking for additional consideration of anything besides what's already on this landscaping plan.
Are you requesting, like, additional plantings, a wider buffer?
Yeah, and then, and then I think I would ask the circuit rider, what, do they need a waiver? Do they need additional variance? Because they are going to be within violation of that fifty-foot landscaping buffer as well. I'm just kind of, you know, that might just be procedural in, in nature and doing it properly. But I think the most important thing for us is that we have a robust landscaping plan, and that is pretty robust, and then that there's a, an appropriate bond to enforce it. But we appreciate, you know, everything you guys have done on our behalf as well.
Jim?
All right, thank you.
In preparation for the ZBA meeting, they had me check into where their, the ZBA's jurisdiction ends, and technically, it is at the town line. Once you get into Plastow, that's why you see, what you see for a landscaping plan is that basically meets the criteria of the ZBA's condition for approval for that variance, because the Newton ZBA can't say you have to plant anything in Plastow. That has to, that would have to come from the Plastow Planning Board.
And if I may, this issue was resolved at zoning board. Secondly, the fifty-foot vegetated buffer, we're not proposing anything in the vegetated buffer. It doesn't say it has to be forty-foot pines. It's a vegetated buffer, right? All it's going to be is vegetation. So it meets the definition of the vegetated buffer, no matter what. This, and it's been resolved at ZBA anyway.
Excuse me?
Miss Estabrock, yes. Sorry, Mrs., Miss?
Andrew Estabrock, chairman of Conservation. My new hat.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So we have discussed their plan in two separate meetings for Conservation, and our latest, last one last month, we did go over the plan and the, she was there, we talked with her. So, we did make a motion to request the official decision from the ZBA, because we did not have that in front of us to read it. So, like, I didn't want to send something to you guys unless I really knew what it was we were trying to answer. So, we're having a meeting next week, so hopefully, we'll have that copy of the decision, then we can put some verbiage together that we did and send it over, if that's helpful. So at least you know we did look at it.
That notice of decision was in your mailbox?
It wasn't last time, because I got the mail and there was only one thing in it.
No, it, it was put in there three days after the meeting.
Oh, well, I didn't get it. So.
So I, I apologize. I, it was delivered to the, to the Conservation Commission with the exact, because it specified what
Yeah.
points on the road, to what point on the road, the, what stations needed to be, to be covered.
So we'll get a copy for that for next week, and then?
And since the planning board has since seen this, it's expanded a couple hundred feet, correct? The length of this?
Yeah, they did a rendition, added some more trees.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Yeah, the ones on the Plastow side.
Or was the language changed slightly?
So, I have the notice of decision right here, which I'll give to her, but the part regarding the, the Conservation Commission, it indicates that the applicant worked with the Conservation Commission to design and implement, implement a natural buffer between stations seventeen fifty and twenty-five plus fifty and the abutting properties. Landscape will need to be reviewed and approved by the Newton Planning Board, as well as the applicant, most posted performance guarantee. But no, we, we did have a, a shorter landscape buffer when we came and talked to you. We increased the length of it, increased the understory as was required, and we now meet the requirements as requested by the zoning board, the CONCOM, and now we're here for approval.
You know what? I think the confusion, Jim, is the language was the same, but the plan view did not extend from station to station, if I recall correctly.
Correct. What you see in front of you, I believe, is the second iteration. The first iteration was just a row of trees.
Yeah.
And that was to give the, the planning board an idea of where they were headed.
Right. That, because the, in plan view on the drawing, it's increased, but I think the language somewhere, I forget where it was, is the same.
Right.
Jim, do you have anything to add, or Barbara?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
Dennis, my, my only comment is they do not need an additional variance for landscaping buffer, you know, any, whether there was intent to cuts in Plastow, I don't have the answer to that, or in Newton, for that matter. I don't think they need any additional approvals from the zoning board or from the CONSCOM on this matter.
Okay. Do you want to discuss the bond at all, or?
I don't have anything discussed regarding it.
Okay.
But I think we submitted previously. I don't have it in front of me.
So their position is they lost the depth and the density of the original buffer zone, and your position is the buffer zone is still there. It's just going to fill in at its own rate, at its own pace.
Absolutely. I mean, it's.
It's just unfortunate they lost that, but now they have to sit and wait for it.
It's a fifty-foot external lan, or vegetated buffer. It doesn't say it has to be.
I understand what it says, but.
I mean, if it was, if it was previously a field, and we were, we wouldn't have this discussion.
But it wasn't, though.
It wasn't. But it could have been. I mean, if you were playing devil's advocate.
Then they wouldn't care as much.
Then they wouldn't mind, right?
Jim?
In my research for the ZBA on that whole landscaping matter, I was advised by the NHMA that the applicant, that the butters have the right, when it goes before the Plastow Planning Board, to request it of the Plastow Planning Board for any plantings they want to see on the Plastow side of the, the line. That, however, that's not within.
Our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Dennis, can I just reiterate one important thing with this application?
Yep.
That this application can't go forth unless the one we're actually going to talk about, I think, later this evening, is constructed because of the access.
Yes. Yes. That's what I was... Jim was just mentioning.
Oh, okay, yeah, just, it's an important point for the applicant to be reminded of, and the board and any abutters, just any approval is contingent on the other application actually, not only being constructed, but reaching final construction. At least with the roadway itself specifically.
I guess I, what are our next steps, Jen? We can...
I think, I think unless there are any other outstanding items, I actually think this may be ready for a conditional approval. I think there are some conditions certainly, but they have addressed all of my comments, they have addressed all of Mike McNally's comments, they have the variances that they need, they still will need some permits and other normal conditions subsequent, but I think that they have reached that level of completion.
And, I mean, obviously, the big one is, I'll say, phase one approval, even, whatever phase you want to call it.
Phase two, yeah.
Phase two, okay.
Can we, can we be a little more specific with the, like, the pathways, the walkways, the escape routes for the ADA, exterior lighting maybe, and the stairs, how the stairs are going to configure to the walkways and stuff?
We included additional lighting, there is a lighting plan that shows all that, and the, all the buildings are ADA compliant. I think we discussed this previously, the walkways are all ADA compliant as well.
Right, and, but the push-out windows, there's a walkway below them and stuff, yeah, okay, that's what my concern was, how to get to the front of the house to get to the ambulance.
It's all code enforcement and building permits.
Yep.
We won't let you get past that.
Good. So ADA compliant is a push-out window from the first floor?
Yeah.
Emergency egress? Right way?
Yeah.
What is there, no sill or something, the windows right?
It's much larger.
Tom, just for Barbara.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Tom, like, board nor instructors builders for 125 development, any kind of ADA situation on the windows, which is only one particular window in the five plexes, it's a push-out swing window, it breaks away, and it gives the fire department an access and to work with the ADA person. And the rest of the unit is all ADA, it's in all your drawings, shows the kitchen, bathrooms, same with the front door, walkways, ramps, steps, everything we're doing will be ADA compliant. We have to work with Sam Sinidiwill and all that, and we always have, so I don't think there's an issue anywhere.
No, the walkways weren't on the other drawings, that's all, so we just wanted to see more detail.
I think what it is, we shape them to fit as we do it, it's kind of hard to do where we're at, but, you know, he's going to come out and measure everything, I get, I won't get a CEO, but I would be incomplete.
Yep.
In his way, so.
Proposed would be.
Well, I can't propose the ones as built, so it's got to be, you know what I'm saying? So it has to be exact at that point, but we never had an issue with any of that, anyway. We, we make it work, that's all. We'll make them look pretty, trust me.
Well, people have to get out, get to the walkway and then get to the front of the building, if they have a snowdrift, the window won't open, they can't get out, you know.
Right, but I just wanted to clarify that, that, you know, it's fully, I mean, you can't get a building permit without all that meeting it.
Understood.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. German, in light of what was just said, I was asked to make a note by the Planning Board in the past regarding elevations of the proposed buildings showing the transition between the walkway and the building, so that we, so the Planning Board can decide whether or not it's two steps, one step, one step down. All you have is an elevation drawing that shows the building with a flat base. However, there's no, because it's not going on flat property.
Tom, do you have?
Well, I'm just saying, the drawings look flat, but they're not flat, I agree, but obviously, we're going to do something on the front, you, we will hold all the code, how we'll do it, we're not quite certain yet, we're not there, and for us to put that in, Planning Board telling us two or three steps?
Yeah, you can't do that right now.
Kind of ridiculous, you know what I mean?
I get that.
I don't think we need to get that nitpicky, we never have before.
I think just the paths, the walkways would be fine and, and just...
They're kind of minimal, they just follow the, you know, the parking lot, basically, they're not really a whole lot, but obviously, it's the center unit that's this ADA in each end, and we have to make them go both directions, so.
Right.
I don't, I don't think, I think there's more, you know, it's going to land on Sammy, building permit, and instead of trying to figure that out right now, and if, you know, I build three instead of two?
Yes, Jeff.
You know who we are again, we'll be right back here.
Jen, do you have anything to add about those concerns? Sorry, I just grabbed my mic.
I mean, they haven't met the standards for what are required in your site plan requirements as far as for floor elevation. If there is any, I will say, significant change to what has been proposed versus minor things in the field, they would have to come back to the Planning Board.
And Barry, just for clarification, these are single floor?
Oh, yeah, single floor and single bedroom.
Plus or minus, for the ADA compliant, I'm assuming they're at grade because your building's elevators or ramps?
It's on grade, and the sidewalks right out the front of the doors, along the whole, each of the, and it's shown on there, so the elevations of the sidewalks, you know, we're at just a couple percent slope on each side, so there's not going to be steps, it's, you know, you, you go out the window, you're going to be on the sidewalk, and it's not going to be a step down or anything.
So, just for, an example building would be Fitzgerald's Building, similar size on 108 North?
Similar.
Yeah, obviously, not like identical, but that type of one unit, or one-story structure.
Right, the plans, spell it out, in specific, which ones the ADA...
Yep.
Can he, can he come to the mic?
Oops, sorry.
Get up here.
Yeah, the plans, the plans specify that we've submitted, they show the ADA, and we meet, we meet the regs.
Thank you. Thoughts on conditions?
I have a bunch of them in front of me.
Dennis, can I bring up one very specifically before?
Yes.
You guys get into it. Just based on some past issues, not only, not this property owner specifically, but just in general, when there's a pre-construction meeting, I would strongly recommend that the inspection schedule be laid out and either be at specific milestones or on a routine basis during a pre-construction meeting as a condition of any approval on this. It's pretty standard practice, but I think it would be helpful on projects of this scale.
Jen, historically, the town of Newton does not require third-party SWIP inspections or observations, correct?
Of SWIPs? No, I wouldn't necessarily suggest that be part of the conditions, but something routine similar to what a SWIP inspection protocol might be on other sites. But having the town engineer come out on a routine basis is not outside of what is normal practice in Newton.
Do you have any recommendations of what routine is, if you're not doing milestones? Is that bi-monthly, weekly?
I think it's so variable.
Would you recommend milestones?
I would recommend something at least, probably either monthly or bi-monthly, and it could be in lieu of milestones, but I would recommend you work that out with the town engineer and have that be part of the pre-construction discussion as to the frequency needed, maybe not with the conditions specifically.
One of the boilerplates is that the NEPA account must be maintained to cover the cost of the town engineer's inspections and site visits, usually until the plan is sort of brought together and the town engineer knows what he's going to be inspecting. He, there's, but that becomes part of the pre-construction meeting of the town engineer go, informing him, I want as...
Right, and that's, I'm trying to formulate a condition that has some, I mean, it's going to be very unknown, within reason, of a dollar value in number of inspections, like, I mean, I know your objective is probably to get this built ASAP, but that might not So, could we condition that at a generic level, just leave it as maintain the NEPA account?
You, you can also specify a condition that as part of any pre-construction meeting, the town engineer and the applicant's representative meet to discuss a schedule of milestone inspections and routine inspections.
That works for me, that way it's in, KD partners are not...
Yeah, that works for us, too.
Okay.
You got that, Tom?
Is there like an independent testing firm that does compaction tests? It, just gradations, things like that?
That is something that we could, I, that is something I would anticipate or hope that the town's engineer would receive the information that they do, that their third-party or their contractor does.
You guys have somebody?
At the pre-construction meeting, the town engineer will indicate when he wants testing.
I wasn't sure, yeah, that's...
And then, we don't do the testing, there's a third party.
Right, whoever.
Tons of them.
Yeah, so we would get those, we as the KD partners would get that information and say, yes, they hit 95%, or, no, they did not, and asphalt's whatever, two, two and a half, one and a half, I don't know what you're specing, but...
Right, I can't remember either.
It's in general conformance with the project drawings, as approved by the town of Newton.
I would suggest that you could then have the condition being the NEPA account must be maintained to cover the cost of the town engineer inspection and site visits in accordance with the list of milestone inspections as recommended by the town engineer.
That works for me.
Yep. Yep.
Two items, two items that you need to handle before you can finish your conditions prescient, and that is the amount of the bond and the amount of the landscaping bond.
So I would recommend that we work both those out with the town engineer, we're going to have to review them with him, anyway.
You have always listed the bond values in the notice of decision.
And we haven't received anything yet, correct, to review? We have not, the board has not received...
We haven't received...
Bond, proposed bond values for our consideration and review. Yes.
You can do one of two things, you can either wait for the recommendations, or you can have it be a condition of approval, and if there is any disagreement, then the applicant can come back to the board.
I prefer the second option personally. I'm not sure what other people's preferences are.
Which is what?
We can either condition it, and if we can't come to a, say they propose $10, we want 15, they would have to come back in front of us if we don't agree upon it.
That's the second option.
That's the, yes, the conditional.
Which is what she just said.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's correct, right, Jen? I'm going to say Jen said yes.
Sorry, I nodded my head, I was swallowing.
You're really small on our screen.
No reduced.
Is it, is the bond, is it like per phase, is that how it would be, or?
This bond would only relate to the 44-unit residential, 44 residential units.
Phase two?
Phase three, five.
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 And the roadway.
And the roadway going to that location.
Right.
And then there was a separate bond specifically, specifically related to the landscape plan.
Landscaping, so then as the other phases come out, there's other bonds that...
Correct. So we have bond, third-party engineer, conditions, boilerplate, conditions.
Would you like me to read the list of conditions?
Absol, yes, please.
Okay. Number one is obtain all federal, state, and local permits. Number two is meet all health, safety, all public health, safety codes, and ADA. Number three is obtain Plastow signatures on all recorded plans. Number four is the overall approval is contingent on phase two being, roadway being built. Number five is supply recordable mylaws of cover page, pages C2, C2A, C3, and L1. Mylaws must have all professionals, necessary professional stamps, mylaws must list all state permits on the first recorded page, mylaws must list all conditional, all conditions subsequent or ongoing on the recorded page, supply the bond in the amount of, I still don't know that, supply landscaping bond in the amount of, to be placed, to be in place for two years after the completion of the landscaping. Obtain a public water supply permit is required by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services.
Can we get rid of that one? Can we remove that condition? We already, I don't, I don't want to conflict with our first condition of obtain all local, federal, and state requirements.
That's the boilerplate that goes at the top of every single, do you not want that there?
No, I want the first one, I don't want the one you just said, unless Jen tells me I'm out of my mind.
Oh, the, the public water supply is actually a separate item than all state and federal permits? Usually those refer to building permits or AOTs.
But a state permit, if it's a public water supply, would cover that.
Okay.
You don't, you don't need the second one, the first one covers it.
I just don't want the...
Less typing.
We're taking out ten?
Yep.
Legal protections for the town of Newton and liability waivers must be in place per the site plan regulations 8.2.4, and that's access to town roads, private roads. I'm not reading all the language to go with that. Conditions subsequent are all building and landscaping shall be in accordance with the recorded site plan, and any changes need to be approved by the Planning Board through an amended site plan application prior to issuance of any occupancy permits for an individual building. Construction site work inspections and/or monthly site visits by the town engineer. Copies of the as-built plan shall be provided to the Planning Board prior to issuance of an occupancy permit. Four, confirm that adequate septic facilities exist prior to issuance of a occupancy permit. Five, the NEPA account must be maintained to cover the cost of the town engineer's inspections and site visits in accordance with the list of milestone inspections as recommended by the town engineer. And finally, conditions ongoing, each new occupant will require a new occupancy permit in any commercial buildings.
That's specific to commercial? That's specific to commercial?
Well, it's commercial light and in those areas that are commercial, light, industrial.
Okay. I didn't know if because it's residential that would, Jen, do you have a comment?
Yeah, because it's residential, that one's not applicable.
Though actually, in the town of Newton, the town ordinances require any rental unit to be inspected between occupants.
Inspected by who?
The fire, the fire department.
So I just have a clarification regarding the phase two road. That's approval, not full construction before we get these signed off. Obviously, they'd have to have.
What I wrote based on what board members said was, the overall approval is contingent on phase two roadway being built, as that is part of the.
That would be a CO issue, not a precedent. The approval would be precedent. Getting the CO would be the subsequent.
In that case, I'll change the, the built to approved and recorded.
That works.
Yeah, that'll do. With all that being said, I will make the motion to approve with those.
The only question I had was the language that Jim mentioned specific to the two bonds. He said unknown amount. Can we just memorialize that to language like to be determined, to be reviewed and approved by, to be reviewed by the town engineer and approved by the planning board? Does that work?
Yeah, that works because if, if Mr. McDonough does not agree, he can come back before the planning board.
And that would be the only issue, the only topic of discussion at that if we can't.
Correct. It would be sort of like what we're going to do in a few minutes with the compliance hearing.
Yep, okay, thank you.
As far as all the third-party inspections on the roadway and stuff like that, we, we will get all that before, just those.
That's kind of, that's gonna happen first. Obviously, a road's gonna get built, I would imagine.
Are you talking about the third-party reports?
Yeah, yeah, from.
So those typically.
Everything from subgrade to right on up.
The, the reports or Mike Vicnelli's findings typically go to code enforcement and/or the building department, is my understanding. But if there's a, that's outside of actually the purview of the planning board, right, Jen? We can only.
Correct.
Provide the avenue for enforcement.
Somebody, somebody gets the document.
It's not the planning board, though.
No, whoever.
We have.
It is issued to the town of Newton, yes.
Right.
So historically, all our compaction tests have been done with Sammy. We hand them over to Sam as we, as we progress through our building permits. We get a foundation permit first, and then we get a building permit. So there's a sequence there that's already happening, the building permit. So, you know, and the roadway will come.
So, so Sam is, Sam's the inspector, building inspector in Salem? Is that where you meet Sam?
Same Sam.
Yes, yeah.
So he looks at everything we do regardless.
So he gets all your, he gets everything. He gets all your compaction tests, your gradations, your proctis, your drainage inspections.
Right, so let's say like in UTS inspection, Mike gets them too, right? So that's the request.
His father was in Salem. But it's the son.
Oh, gotcha.
But I think Sam's also in Salem. Oh, he is, okay. Both of them were in Salem.
He's an electrical inspector in Salem. His father, I believe, is the building inspector of Salem, Jim.
Yeah, as long as, as long, I mean, you just want to make sure you see stuff like that, that's all. Somebody does.
Yeah, and as, as the first issue, the first condition that will set up the schedule with.
Right.
The town engineer at the pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, usually it'd be like erosion control.
Right, starting right from the.
Subgrade, finish grade, paving, drainage. I'm missing a few, but it's, yeah. Stabilization.
So we already have a proposal?
We don't have a proposal yet, but that's, those are typical milestones that I would expect if we're only proposing milestones versus.
I think we've already got a proposal to accept.
Accept, what, sorry, what?
This.
Oh, Bob made a motion to.
Motion, that's what I meant, yes.
And it hasn't been seconded, has not been seconded.
Who seconded?
Nobody.
Nobody, so we've got all the language that we want to include in there.
Yep.
Dennis, this is Barbara. I'll second it.
So Barbara has seconded it.
Ms. White? Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye. I just have one question. This approval is good for one year?
Excuse me?
The approval is good for one year?
No, so your approvals are.
Six months.
According to, are six months. If you wish to make it one year, you can do that as a condition of your approval tonight.
And then the other question or more notice to the applicant is, we need the bond information?
ASAP.
ASAP, according to Jim, so that we can review this and make sure that we are all in agreement to the amount we need for both the roadway as well as the landscaping. Yes, Jen?
I was just gonna say regarding the, the lifespan of the notice of decision, it's six months in accordance with your policies and procedures and your rules of procedure.
And to add, an extension would just be the applicant notifying the board.
Right, they, they have the ability to extend.
Thank you.
To request an extension.
Next, 125, New Hampshire Corp. of Plastile, New Hampshire, requests a compliance hearing for the notice of decision regarding their four-building site plan off South Main Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, block one, lot 273.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Once again, Barry Guyer with Jones and Beach for the applicant. We're here tonight to, to speak directly to the four-building site plan that was, we call phase twos, that, that was conditionally approved by the planning board back in March of 2023. We have a couple items we'd like to discuss regarding the conditions of approval. The first is condition number three. This condition requires approval from the gas line company prior to approval of the plans as it is precedent condition. We request to move this condition to a subsequent condition to be, to be required prior to building CO being granted. The, the construction of the buildings and access to Route 108 do not require the construction over the gas line, and the last 200 feet of the extension road's the only part that crosses the gas line. So this will allow us to at least get started and get work completed before we have to get a sign off from the gas company. We are working with the gas company and trying to get this resolved, but they don't move as fast as we want them to. The second is condition 11, which on your sheet actually says 16, but that was a typo. It's a condition precedence relating to the performance bond. We discussed this previously, but the, the applicant requests the performance bond and the notice of decision be revised to $176,971. The applicant requests the bond reflect the amount of money required to stabilize and revegetate the development site in the event the project is abandoned. The amount was reviewed and agreed upon by the town engineer, and the applicant requests the performance bond be allowed to be reduced as construction is complete upon review with the planning board. In addition, at the time that the developer requests certificates of occupancy, if the construction on all infrastructure is not complete, the town engineer can request an amount to be posted for a, a performance bond so that the applicant can obtain a CO prior to completing all of the work. And lastly, which isn't in your letter, but the, we are requesting an extension to phase two approval for one year. We're continuing to work with DOT and the gas company, and we don't believe, I didn't see any changes to the zoning or, or site plan regulations that would adversely impact the project. So we are requesting an extension. Our previous extension is up, I think, in March.
Thank you.
Do we want to deal with that extension first?
I was gonna ask, that may be the easiest thing to cross, unless the board has any, is there any comments before we just kind of check that one off?
This is Barbara. What we have in the policies and procedures says six months, doesn't say a year, so I don't know whether we can change that or do it for six months and have them come back and ask for another six months? Just a question.
Jen's ready to answer.
You have purview over the policy and procedures, so you can extend it beyond the six months. You don't have to, but you can.
I got a question. What's the extent? Unfortunately, it's March, so you're, you're looking to the end of March. What does it do to you in December, January, February, and March of next year? Does it hurt you as far as finishing up work or?
Well, this is for the conditions of approval for phase two.
Just for the approval. I gotcha, I'm sorry.
Two of the conditions that are really the outstanding ones are DOT approval of our driveway.
Yep.
And the gas line people.
I gotcha.
That's part of the precedent ones as well.
Any other questions?
At least we just roll with the six months for now and see what happens. We can always extend it again if need be.
Would you prefer that, Barbara, since you're?
I think that's more in line with what we have in the policies and procedures, you know, but it's up to the board if they want to extend it to a year.
Okay. I agree with your, the logic in that. That makes sense. Jim?
Did Mr. Mashon make that as a motion?
I am.
Now he did.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
That's for a six-month extension?
Yes.
So that's granted.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So that's the waiver.
Extension.
The extension, I mean.
Jen, do you have any comments on the gas line?
My one thing with the gas line is that I would strongly not recommend a, that a construction can occur over the gas line. I don't have any, pardon, issue with the CO being the trigger point for needing to get the approval, but if there's any construction, and I mean including building the road over that gas line easement, that just poses a safety hazard. So as long as it's not infringing on any construction occurring over that easement, I don't think there's an issue with when they have to have that approval of the gas line utility, but it does seem a little, I'll say, odd to start building a road where you're gonna have the road go over the easements and not have approval of the gas line. It seems that you would just build the road all at once, but that's my main concern is the safety of the construction vehicles over the gas line.
Can we, does the planning board have the jurisdiction to phase an approval or portions of the approval to say no work shall occur on the, within the gas easement until approval has been obtained by the, it's not Unitil, even though I think it's, is it Unitil?
It's ultimately Unitil, yeah. But yes, you, you can do that.
And after, if and when, if the planning board accepts that or moves forward with that condition or revision to the conditions, that would be the, then in the jurisdiction of code enforcement, correct?
Yes. I mean, you could do it so that no building or construction can occur in the easement prior to any certificate of occupancy being issued, so they have to get that approval letter before the CO, and they can't do any construction in the easement.
Which is probably what the deed restriction is on the easement as well.
So I think there's a way of, I'll say, getting to something that's practical, but also keeps the safety issue in check.
Okay, I saw Coleman had his hand up, but it disappeared. I'm not sure if he was.
I, I think we're on the same page. We obviously can't do any construction over the, in, within the easement. We don't plan to, but this would allow us to do all the construction up to the easement and, and, and be able to, before we get a CO, we have to have the sign off from the gas line company.
Actually, Dennis, can I recommend one other thing? As a condition of this, if you move forward with it, that signage be posted right on the boundary of the easement so that no, I'll say, vehicles.
I was gonna recommend a physical barrier, but can we?
Or that.
Jersey barriers?
Yeah.
Signage and jersey barriers, barriers.
I think we're currently allowed to cross that, so we don't want to, we don't want to eliminate our ability to cross the easement. We want to eliminate our ability to construct a new road over the easement.
Oh, crush it, yeah.
Does that make sense?
There's not a concern with heavy machinery going over it?
We, they have the right to cross it now. They do it every day.
How deep is that pipe?
We are determining that as we.
You're not sure?
We, they flagged it this past week. We shot it last week, and so now they're determining if they need additional cover over it.
Right.
So they gotta run their cows.
Be running rock trucks and stuff up there, right? No?
We have it for a long time.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't knock the sensors off.
Just for, I guess, everybody's acknowledgement, based on Unitil's correspondence, they or their previous engineer determined that it was unsafe for highway-rated vehicles. And it.
So they put a restriction on it for weights?
Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the current forestry road that's been there since 1942 crosses at a certain section. The new road is in a completely different section, and we've been crossing that over, and everybody else has been crossing it over prior to Coleman owning, owning the property. Coleman's owned it since 2004. We've been crossing over 2006 with heavy equipment, excavators, stuff, so I don't want to eliminate any kind of access to that road. We won't build the new road, which is 50, 60 feet away in a different location. It's not in the same. So the one that we have that we're using and that they use, because they do, you know, monthly inspections, that's the, we want to maintain that road.
What are they driving on it for those?
Oh, any different excavators, the land clearing equipment to.
For an inspection? That's what they do.
Yeah, they, they mow it.
It's generally low ground pressure compared to highway vehicles.
Right. So I just want to maintain that ability to cross at, at the current location because I can't eliminate that because obviously we're working the project, right? But I have no problem blocking off the new section. I'd be okay with that and putting some signs up. I'd be okay with that and putting some signs up or whatever, because it's a lot shallower where that is, so.
The new section.
Right, but we don't know where the pipes are, so if they don't know where they are, we're trying to determine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what I'm saying is it's important for us because regardless of that going on, we won't even be there till August or September, and I think by then we'll have this resolved. If they're gonna replace pipes, which is a possibility, on the Unitil line because it's older, before we cross under with our utilities and then encase everything in concrete, so that's the only reason this has gone in a circle. I know there's a real bad letter that came from them that somebody just popped off on us. It's not who we're dealing with. We're dealing with somebody else, and we've been working diligently at this, and we're finally making progress right now, but everybody's short-staffed, so we haven't... Like you see, we're asking for extension again, and we're at one-year points as you guys approved us. The only reason is that all departments are shorthanded, so, you know, we're fervently trying to keep everything alive going. We have buildings laying on ground, we get customers waiting, we're trying to make this work, so I appreciate all your hard work and help us get this going. I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim?
In a conversation that I had with Mr. Burnham from Unitil, he had called to find out the status of an existing site plan for that site prior to the latest one, because Unitil has a problem with the fact that on the Google Earth pictures, it appears that there is heavy land-moving, stone-crushing, some sort of a process going on on the property, not just up at the front of the property, but with heavy trucks possibly going over the pipelines. And I told him that there was no recorded plan, there was no permission to have industry on that property at this time. He basically said, "Thank you very much," and we quickly ended the conversation. Their, Unitil's concern was with development of that, there is nothing to prevent tractor-trailer trucks with loam, gravel, what have you, using the backside of the property going over the pipeline for stockpiling of materials.
Dennis?
Yes, Jen.
I understand, Jim, what Jim is bringing up, but that is a little bit beyond what you are here tonight to have jurisdiction over. The gas, how to deal with the gas line approval and the easement are what's really germane to this discussion.
So I think for clarification for this, at least my recommendation is that the work shall, work shall not occur within the easement until the design and location of the proposed crossing has been approved by Eversource. Anything, work that it may or may not be happening now is not within the current approval of the planning board. I guess my recommendation or notice to the applicant or the property owner is that they should be operating or conducting their operations within their agreement with Eversource. And can I leave it at that? Does that make sense, Jen? I probably could have worded that a little bit better, but...
Did you pay any attention to write that down?
It does.
I would just replace the word "work" with the word "construction," just to be clear on that.
Thank you. Do you want me to just say that again, Jim? I'll try to say that again. Construction shall not occur within the gas easement until approval has been attained by Unitil and its subsidiaries. I think there's two gas lines there. Maybe?
Yeah, we think so.
Okay.
You got another hand up.
Mr. McDonough? Yes. Guest colon does have their hand up. Maybe, maybe he doesn't know it? Okay. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that by standing it that way, so we'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So Barbara's seconding that, Jim?
Yes, I'm just... Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We got one more.
One more. So the last one is regarding the bonding amount. Originally, the bonding amount was set at 2.1, but that was, 2.1 million for that was the construction for the whole thing. It's a private site, so what we're asking is the bond be revised to be a stabilization and erosion control revegetation bond, much the same as you did for the last project. That would bring the bonding amount down to 176,971, make it 177,000. And that we can re-review that with the town engineer and the planning board if they want to reduce it in the future.
Jen, do you have any comments on this?
Getting to that level of bonding for the items that Barry just described seems reasonable to me, the amount I can't really comment on.
Yep. And KV Partners reviewed it and agreed with the reduction. That was a question, Jen, sorry.
Yeah, you should have had an email that was with the submittal that indicated...
Yes, you did, or KV Partners did.
Sorry, that was a somewhat rhetorical question for confirmation. Okay, so KV Partners agrees that that dollar value, 171?
177.
177 would be adequate to restore the site if 125 leaves.
Do we still have one in place for the road, correct?
That, for the roadway?
Yeah.
This is a private road, so you don't bond a private road.
So basically, if they got a couple hundred feet in and then left, it wouldn't allow the town to construct the road, but lom and seed it and stabilize it and...
That's what I mean.
But then, I guess, at that case, the town would own the property, maybe?
No, it's still a private road.
No, I'm saying if the bond had to be pulled, that the option would be defunct.
Well, the bond would just allow the town to go in and revegetate to prevent any erosion, so the buildings couldn't be occupied without the road, so none of that would occur. This is just...
That's the point I was getting to, right.
Unlike a public road, you would, you know, you would go in and finish it because there may be homeowners along that road.
Right, and what I'm saying is if that actually happened, there would be no project, and the land would probably be vacant.
Well, it'd still be owned by the owner, but it's just be, would be vacant. You're correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And 177 covers these phases that we're talking about?
Phase 2.
Phase 2 only, not...
Because the other one's buildings.
That's a totally different application.
Completely different, yep, yep.
That bond for that other application, we still have to set, which, what's the difference in roadway? Do you know, just...
I could tell you off the top of my head. Probably similar.
Probably similar, the bond amount for the road would probably be roughly the same.
So how much is the bond now, a million something?
Two...
2.1.
And so enough has been accomplished to reduce it that much?
Nothing's been done.
Well, it's, we're looking at a different bonding number. The bond for 2.1 was construction of all the infrastructure, so if we built 100 feet of roadway, that 2.1 would allow you to complete the construction of the roadway, put in all the infrastructure, but the town's not gonna do that because it's not a public road. So all we're asking is a change in the bond to be a, instead of a construction, it's gonna be for the revegetation.
And there was no separate landscaping bond for this project?
No, I don't believe there was.
Okay, no.
No, we just had that one complete, and that's what I was getting to earlier.
Why did we have that much then?
Because it was for the entire project.
It was all-inclusive.
It should have been the 177 instead of the 2.1.
I was gonna say, so something happened back then. The amount was too high.
I think it was just a miscommunication.
Oh. I can't recall off the top of my head what landscaping provisions were in that approval.
Is there a motion?
Who did you say approved, again?
The town engineer.
Motion to approve.
Jen, do you understand the comment I just made?
Honestly, your audio's coming in and out, so if you can say it again?
I said, "I can't recall when the planning board accepted the bond amount of 2 million plus or minus." That was all-inclusive of the project for site restoration and any landscaping, correct?
I can't off the top of my head remember if it included...
I think we just discussed it.
I'll say decorative landscaping.
Okay, so there was no screening. Yes, Jim?
No.
Past history is it starts as a reclamation bond, then once the enough work has been done, it becomes a roadway completion bond. And the buildings are not part of that.
Right, what I wanted to confirm is whether or not we looped in a visual screening portion of the project with roadway construction, building construction. I didn't want to remove any potential landscaping bonds by accepting the 177 only for restoration, but it appears although, as though there is no landscaping as part of this project.
There's minimal landscaping because the roadway is outside of the 200-foot buffer. They have proposed planting scattered trees here and there, but not a full length.
Unlike the previous application, we just heard there wasn't a thousand feet of trees proposed.
Right, right.
And there wasn't any specific amount because this landscaping was particularly important. In this case, the revegetation would include any landscaping that was required.
Right, right. I was just making sure that, basically, the applicant was getting off the hook of not having any landscaping.
Right.
So I was trying to, making sure that the town was protected for that as well, but it appears that there is no landscaping or very minimal landscaping, so, okay.
I believe we did talk about some over towards the area of Howard, Howard Lane?
Yeah, there is some trees that are gonna be planted along there.
Right, and that's where some of that was...
If the road doesn't go in, there's no reason for the landscaping. That the revegetation will cover the landscaping.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Okay. I'm okay with that now.
So my motion still stands.
Second.
Mr. Eddie?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
I will combine those into one motion of notice of decision.
The landscaping's not part of it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, minimal landscaping.
Okay, next, we have acceptance of the meeting minutes from January 9th, 2024, and February 13th, 2024. Jim, thank you for typing up all 22 pages twice. Jen, do you want to just take off and enjoy your vacation, and we can talk about the master housing plan next?
Vacation, what?
The only thing with the last item on the agenda for the master plan in the invest in New Hampshire is that at the next meeting, I do need to have a solid dedicated, I'll say, hour of your time to go through some items.
Thank you for attending when you're away.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, everybody.
See you, Jen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Sorry, Tom.
I just wanted to thank you, the board, for all the hard work. It's been a few years. A lot of you have come and gone, and we'll see you soon anyway. We'll be back.
Okay. Have a good night.
Take care. Okay.
Do you have a motion?
For meeting minute approvals?
Right.
Not yet.
I take that as Mr. Mashon?
Something like a motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie.
And I, and I thank you for retyping some of that.
I apologize, but I don't know where my mind went, and sometimes when I prove...
Like Dennis said, it was a lot to have to go through, so...
Ms. White?
Aye.
Mr. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Ms. Eddie?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
I wasn't here two meetings ago, so...
You can abstain.
As long as you believe that they are correct, you may vote. Okay, thank you. Mr. Papa Christus?
Aye.
And Mr. Moran?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Meeting adjourned at 9:00.